Okay, we will get started very soon. I'm just wanting everyone to please make sure your phones are turned to silent and any other devices, and I'll check my own. Yep. Great. Okay. I'll now request that we go to the live stream. Okay, so I'd like to open the meeting. Good evening, councillors, officers and community members in attendance this evening. I'd also like to welcome councillors Sangster and Selkos who are on the screen, joining us online this evening. My name is councillor Christina Laris. I don't know why I had to look what my name is. My name is councillor Christina Laris and I am the Darabben Mayor. And I'm also the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you all here tonight to this council meeting, and I declare the meeting open at 6:02pm. The meeting is being livestreamed. It's also, a recording will be made available on the council website as soon as possible after the meeting. And I did want to also do a special welcome to councillor Angela Velella, who is joining us for the first time with this council at least, our newly elected councillor. And yeah, so welcome, welcome to you councillor Velella. So I, as always, would like to start by acknowledging that we are meeting on the lands of the Orangie Warriorong people, who are the traditional owners of the land on which Darabben stands. I recognise their continuing connection to land, to waters and to culture, and pay my respects to elders past and present. And I'd also like to affirm our commitment to truth treaty and to self-determination for First Nations people. I'd like to welcome everyone, but all of the councillors, our executive leadership team who are also joining us this evening. And I think, yes. And there are no apologies for tonight's meeting. The first thing we need to do is just look if there were any, ask if there were any disclosures of interest. So if any councillor or relevant staff member has a conflict of interest in relation to anything on tonight's agenda, they need to disclose it now. And they need to disclose what the, the nature of the conflict of interest. Any conflicts of interest must be declared immediately prior to the item being considered as well as now. And if there's any conflicts that arise during the agenda, during the meeting, that people hadn't previously been aware of, then do let me know at that point in time. So councillors and officers, are there any conflicts in relation to tonight's agenda? Oh, great. Okay, thank you. Councillors, can I have a mover for the adoption of the minutes of the ordinary meeting, which was held on the 28th of July 2025? Councillor Jelly, thank you. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Arturi, thank you. I think I'll just put this motion to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. And that's carried unanimously. So thank you. I'll now just talk a little bit about council's health and safety responsibilities. So council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure that everyone attending tonight's meeting in person or online feels both physically and emotionally safe. It's good to see people here tonight, attending the meeting. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance to be respectful of one another and to maintain a courteous and respectful tone when you're addressing the meeting. If anyone engages in conduct that is improper or disorderly, I will be required to direct you to cease that conduct and the person must comply with that direction. Okay, we're going to go into public question time. So we have allowed 30 minutes for public question time. If we exceed that time, I will ask for a procedural motion from one of the councillors to extend question time for another 30 minutes. And in line with council's governance rules, no question can be taken for people in the gallery unless that question was submitted by 12pm today. You can ask three questions or up to three questions, no more. And it's two minutes in total for those three questions. So please keep in mind it is question time, so we really discourage you from spending that time doing a big preamble. If you get stuck into the question, that would be great. Questions relating to notices of motion petitions or urgent business will not be accepted in accordance with our governance rules. For the members of the public who have registered to ask a question in person, I will call out your name when it's time. If I call your name and you don't respond, I will take it that you're not in the gallery and one of our officers will read the question on your behalf. The relevant GM will then provide a response. If you're in attendance in person or virtually, I will invite you to come to the lectern or unmute your microphone if you're online, but otherwise pop that microphone on if you're in the room. Just a little button next to it. State your name and ask your question. Light questions are grouped together. So if we get a lot of the same question, we'll just draw them together. The first person who submitted the question gets to ask the question. So I think that's it. So we'll jump in. Our first person is Emma Thompson. Thank you, Emma. So just a reminder, Emma, you've got two minutes, two minutes.
Certainly, and you'd like me to ask my three questions in a row? Certainly. Under Darabben's local laws and parking restriction framework, what is the benchmark or target ratio of parking enforcement officers to parking bays required to ensure compliance is enforced effectively across the municipality? And how is this benchmark determined? How many parking enforcement officers are currently employed or contracted by Darabben Council? And how many full-time equivalent positions does this represent? And thirdly, if the current staffing levels are below the benchmark required for effective enforcement, how long has Darabben Council been operating below capacity? And what steps have been taken to address this gap?
Thank you. So the GM Vanessa is actually doing well today. So we've got Megan Merritt, who's going to be answering questions from that GM.
Thank you, Emma. Thank you for taking the time to discuss this matter with the manager today. I understand that you met with the general manager of community last week. As explained, no formal framework of this nature is currently in operation. Darabben operates a predominantly reactive parking enforcement programme. Officers are deployed in defined precincts to allow the entirety of the municipality to have the necessary coverage. Council is actively reviewing its parking enforcement service as part of a continuously strengthening our services and ensuring we plan for the future and change and growth. In response to questions two and three, Darabben employs seven full-time officers who want to take parking enforcement. The number of traffic officers is determined on several factors, including the number of customer requests received, the geographic size of the municipality and the population density of the area. Thank you.
Thank you both. We've got another parking question coming up from Greg Schneider's, Schneider's, sorry.
I keep it pressed down the whole time?
No, no, don't touch it.
Oh, it's all good to go? Okay. Hello. Given the current construction activity within the Preston Activity Centre, including developments approved under the Victorian government's, under the Victorian government, what specific measures has council put in place to prioritise parking enforcement in areas where trader parking turnover is critical to business operations? And a question one. Under Darabben's local laws and the Planning Environment Act 1987, council has the power to enforce compliance within the construction management plans and traffic management plans as conditions of the planning permits. How many inspections have been conducted at High Street, Oakover, the High Street and Oakover developments in the past six months? And how many breaches have been issued to developers or contractors? And question three, Darabben's Activity Centre strategy commits to supporting local businesses and local business viability during periods of significant development. What formal consultation process has been undertaken with High Street traders in the past 12 months to mitigate construction disruption? And where this is, oh, and where is this documented?
Thank you.
That's mine done, thank you.
And then we've got Megan again.
Thank you for your question, Greg. Council acknowledges the role traffic enforcement officers play in supporting local businesses and encouraging the sufficient turnover of vehicles. Officers operate in a precinct model which allows them to routinely attend activity zones and areas of high parking demand. I can confirm officers have issued a number of infringement notices in the High Street precinct based on specific customer requests as well as other factors over the last month. Construction management plans, this is question two. Construction management plans are not required by Darabben City Council under the local law at this time. This is something that has been identified as a possible amendment that could be considered through the 12-month review of the new local law. The third question. Council consults on its major projects. A project is before council tonight to consult with the community for a second time regarding the proposed street skate upgrade of High Street. The initial consultation progress programme was conducted on the 13th of March 2025 and traders within the development area on High Street were notified via notice and visited by an officer. Consultation included social media posts and content on our website where people from outside the developments area were also able to provide input. The same process will apply for the second round of consultation. Future stages of work will consider the construction management process and measures to minimise the impact upon businesses and customers in High Street, including a business support plan. More generally, we recognise that construction activity will increase as housing grows and council will continue to review its approach towards construction management. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question's about hard rubbish from Christiana Latouf. Is Christiana here? No? Anna might read this out for us then.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Christiana has two questions. The first is why do we need to call to register for a hard rubbish collection when it used to be an annual collection? And the second question, why is there a limit of two cubic metres per collection?
Okay, Rachel, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks to Christiana for the question. So council's trialling a booked hard rubbish collection for two years and that started on the 1st of July. The aim is to see which approach is best for the community and we're actively collecting feedback from residents so that we can review the results and consider the best long-term approach. A report is scheduled to come to council for consideration in late 2026 after the trial's been running for 12 months. We do have options to book by email or online if they're better for residents than making a phone call. And in terms of the two-metre limit, that limit per household is the same as under the blanket collection. It's set really with the intent of meeting the needs of most households and it's provided free and sort of funded by everyone's waste charges. We have sought to give people options if they've got more rubbish to deal with and the trial does that by allowing people to book additional collections for a fee. We're really trying to balance that sort of fairness with the need of some households to deal with extra.
Thank you. The next questioner is not attending, Angela Denton. Anna, can we have the question?
Thank you through you, Mayor. Angela has two questions. The first in relation to boundary fences. So the question is representatives from the city of Darabben's building department recently inspected a boundary fence for compliance. An addition was made to the fence which increased its height from 1.8 metres to 2.35 metres without neighbouring owners' consent. The building department stated in correspondence that they were ill-equipped to take any action in relation to the fence. Can council elaborate on which statutory regulations they can enforce and which regulations they are ill-equipped to enforce? And the second question's about parking. Can council provide an update on a review into parking compliance as stated in answers to questions at last month's council meeting? And in particular advise where they might commence regular patrols around the residential streets nearby the popular Ruckers Hill Entertainment Precinct?
Megan.
Thank you to Angela for her question. As highlighted, members of council's building team inspected the property and discussed the matter with Angela on site. This matter can be pursued with the Dispute Settlement Centre of Victoria, which specialises in fencing disputes between neighbours. As the fence does not pose a danger to life or risk to the occupants or public, council will wait for the outcome of the Dispute Settlement Centre of Victoria process and consider options for enforcement if required following mediation. In response to the second question, council is undertaking a review of its parking services. Council's enforcement is an important service that supports the community, safety and accessibility, and a review will help ensure council's continuously improves this service. Council regularly enforces parking in the vicinity of the Ruckers Hill precinct in response to parking complaints received by the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Sergeant, Max, are you here? Max, you've got two minutes, thank you.
Hello, this is, yep, okay. All right. My question's in regard to the proposed tendering out of works for Mary Creek management and also the Darabben Creek management. Just before I go into that, the, one of the main reasons and benefits of those organisations being set up was to remove the fragmented management.
I'm going to ask you to stick to the questions if you can. We've got a lot of submissions about deciding later, so.
Okay, all right. First question is how would tendering out of management of Darabben and Mary Creek creeks not lead to the loss of the following? Site-specific expertise within those organisations? Long-term knowledge of the restoration works in those organisations? Cooperative coordination efforts along the creeks? And also the loss of earnings from grants that are won by both those organisations that would not be possible to be won by private corporations? The second question is why was no public consultation done in regard to the proposal and the proposed management of Mary Creek? It was just assumed that it would be the same as Darabben Creek with no evidence offered? So thank you.
Thank you, Max. Rachel, I'll get you to respond, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks, Max. Certainly, there's been a lot of interest in this topic. Appreciate the questions. We've got several questions coming up and I know there are a number of submissions as well. In regards to your specific question, it relates to an item on the agenda and so I'll essentially take it as a comment. The thing, I think it's worth just clarifying is the report that's come to the meeting today includes options for council to consider. It's not proposing a particular outcome. What I can share more broadly, and it's not in any way indicating something in relation to the decision tonight, is that whenever council tenders works, it's trying to find the most suitable organisation for a job. And these processes are open to both community organisations and businesses. And council has a strong history of working with not-for-profit community organisations that have come to council through a tender process. I would also like to more broadly share some information. Certainly, the reason this item's coming to council tonight is to try and achieve the best outcome for the parklands and the creek corridors. That's why the matter's been considered well ahead of the expiry dates of the current agreements. If council didn't consider it in time, those agreements would just lapse, which wouldn't be a good outcome for anyone. It is a significant decision. It involves a substantial allocation of community funding and must be considered carefully. If council didn't undertake that process, it wouldn't be meeting the expectations around transparency and fairness or meeting some of its governance obligations. I do certainly emphasise with community members worried about the uncertainty associated with a decision like this. We do also hear about how important transparency is and in many ways that requires decisions like this to be made publicly. That's good, it gives everyone a chance to have a say and share their opinions, but it also feels uncertain in the time before that and I really empathise with that. Thanks to everyone who's come and also everyone is welcome to hear the submissions, the debate and the decision. In terms of public consultation, we have had another question about consultation, Max, from Rod McClellan, so I'll answer both questions together. The main reason that there wasn't specific consultation done is we've sort of weighed the need to make a timely decision with the importance of understanding community views. We do know how highly the community values the work of MCMC and council's meeting process tonight includes opportunities for community input, including submissions, and I know we've got a number of submitters here. So while we haven't undertaken a specific public consultation relating to MCMC, there's no doubt about the strong community support for it and the sentiment's been clearly heard. I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you. Now we've got, oh, have we got Rod? Yeah, Rod's got some other questions, okay. Rod McClellan, attending virtually, I believe.
I am here. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, have you got a camera?
I do have a camera.
Nice to see you. If we could.
My video.
There you are.
Evening councillors, good day, Max. My first question goes to the fact that the MCMC is an incorporated association which council set up as a founding member specifically for the purposes of undertaking these works and management services. So why is this matter now being dealt with as a procurement matter when council has specifically set this entity up in a way that it could make funding contributions? It can control them through the arrangements that it has on a weekly, monthly and yearly arrangement with Mary Creek Management Committee. And if it's unhappy with it, it can directly deal with the matter without going through a tenuring process. Question two, what's three now? Given the amazing outcomes that have been achieved by MCMC for council, residents and the environment over nearly 50 years? And I think that's really germane to the problem here. This is an ongoing thing. It's not an annual, well, contract-by-contract problem. It's an ongoing initiative of council and the community. Will council commit to ongoing membership of MCMC and direct ongoing sustainable levels of funding for management, community programmes and environmental restoration?
Thank you, Rod. Back to Rachel.
Thanks, Rod. So we realise it seems odd that council wouldn't be able to make contributions to an organisation that it helped found without a tender. That was exactly the legal advice that council received and we understood that was because MCMC and DCMC are both legally separate organisations. It seemed odd to council too, and that's why council asked for further work to be done to identify other options. The options in the report in tonight's agenda did find another alternative. The report explains that in detail and includes an option to adjust the procurement policy by adding an exemption. And that's what council will consider tonight. Question three, my apologies. Essentially, we'll take that as a comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Rod.
We've now got Tim Lawrence. Tim appears not to be in the gallery, so could we read out Tim's question?
Thank you through you, Mayor. Tim has one question. A Darabben councillor and Darabben officers have advised that a restrictive covenant prevents the petrol station operator on Hughes Parade from upgrading his petrol, his price sign to an electric one. The owner has supplied legal town planning advice with a contrary view. Can the CEO and mayor clarify the intent of the covenant to assist the operator with his application?
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you to Tim for the question. The operator of the petrol station has been in discussions with council statutory planning officers and has received written advice about the interpretation of covenant and how the matter can progress. We refer you to that correspondence and recommend that the operator seek advice from a suitably qualified professional. Thank you.
Thank you. How are we going for time? Okay. This one's about trees. So we have Margaret Flyerman. Thank you, Margaret. You've got two minutes to focus on your questions, that'd be great.
Yep. An arborist report paid for by the locals found that the sugar gums at 148 Ballantyne Street are in good health and are at least 100 years old and have high landscape significance. With pruning, they are deemed suitable for long-term retention. Given the council's commitment to only approve removal of significant trees as a last resort, will council consider this report when deciding the future of these trees? That's the first question. Second one, the sugar gums are being considered for the National Trust Significant Tree Register in September. Can council ensure it won't finalise this removal application before the National Trust determination? Second question. And finally, in July 2019 council meeting, a report was presented on strengthening tree protection on private property. Recommendations and a resolution were passed committing council to monitor effectiveness of the local law's tree protection policy and to taking steps to improve tree canopy cover as part of planning scheme changes. What is the evidence that council has undertaken this work and delivered on this resolution? Thank you.
Thank you. Is that you, Megan? Yep.
Thank you for your question, Margaret. Thank you for your concern regarding the sugar gum trees located at 148 Ballantyne Street. Council has commissioned an independent arborist assessment of the trees. This assessment is currently being reviewed against the criteria outlined in Darabben's Tree Protection Law 2019. The decision regarding the removal application will be based upon this formal assessment and the requirements of the local law which prioritises the retention of significant trees wherever possible. Permits for street tree removal are issued only when justified under the policy framework. And to question two, council has a 12-week timeframe to process a permit for a tree removal that is protected under the Darabben Tree Protection Local Law and therefore we do not have the discretion to hold off a decision beyond that period. Depending on the September, depending on when in September the National Trust are considering this, the 12-week timeframe may or may not be after their determination. For question three, council is continuing to work on the ways to strengthen tree protection. Council has steadily increased the tree canopy on public land. Approximately 13,500 trees were planted in parks and streets over the last six years. Canopy cover over public land has increased from 13.8% in 2018 and by the end of 2024 to 18.5% and is continuing to grow. Council used new methodology to calculate this in 2023-24, which is suitable for the job but better value for money. which is suitable for the for the job, but better value for money. What we don't have an update on is the canopy cover on private property. We understand overall that canopy cover is decreasing as the density of housing is increasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next questions are from Mari Geary. She's not here tonight, so.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Mari has three questions. The first, uh, and they're in relation to the Darabbin housing strategy. The first, has the proposed changes to the planning scheme taken into account the flood-prone areas that exist halfway between halfway down between Harold Street and Normandy Avenue in the west of Thornbury? The second question, being an incremental change area will increase um, the footprint of housing and increase risks associated with floods and in some instances increase the flood level. Therefore, considering this will impact resident safety, impact their homes and belongings during a flood and create insurance issue. Why has there been no consultation regarding flood impacts due to higher density housing prior to the finalising of the housing planning scheme documents? And the third question, uh, and although flood modelling from Melbourne Water will be released at a later date, why was this not considered at all as part of the planning scheme in the first place?
And we'll have Megan. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mari. In response to questions one, two and three, the housing strategy has considered areas with existing flooding-related overlays and acknowledges that these maps are in the process of being updated by Melbourne Water. Action 33 of the draft housing strategy relates to the update of the flood maps to manage this risk. The update to the flood maps will take into account the changes in our city resulting from increased building footprints and reduced permeability as a result of incremental development over time. In most cases, the flood overlays themselves will be the most appropriate planning tools to manage flood risk in Darabbin by ensuring new development does not exacerbate flooding and is designed to minimise flood damage. If the new maps identify areas of high hazard, this will be considered by officers in the implementation phase of the housing strategy in time for the planning scheme amendment. Further community consultation will inclu- will occur through future planning scheme amendment phases to implement the housing strategy. And s- and a separate planning scheme amendment will be run by Melbourne Water with regard to flood controls. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call on a councillor to councillor Arturi. Um, 30 minutes extension, seconded by councillor O'Brien. Um, so all in favour? Fabulous. So we'll keep going. Uh, the next question is Serena Romelli. Uh, Serena, she's got a couple of different topics. I'll let you ask your questions, Serena.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor and councillors, and congratulations to councillor Velayla on your return to council. Um, and whoever's taking the minutes, I made a typo in my question. If you could change six years to seven years. It has been seven years since Darabbin council resolved to purchase three parcels of land within Clements Reserve from Vic Roads. Can Darabbin council account for the continued delays in choosing and implementing a remediation option and purchasing the lands within Clements Reserve? Do you want me to do the second question?
Uh, maybe continue and then, um, because they're both about Clements Reserve, aren't they? The first two, yeah.
Will the peer-reviewed investigation report into contamination in Clements Reserve, which was scheduled to be submitted to the EPA in early 2025, be made publicly available?
And the thing, thank you, um.
Okay, start with those ones. The last one's completely different.
Those two first, yeah.
Uh, thanks, Serena. Um, you'll recall certainly that the process we've been stepping through did, um, was adjusted. Um, really at the point the EPA, uh, got involved with the site. Um, so the stage we've just finished is a detailed site investigation, and that was an EPA requirement. We've worked with the Victorian Government's Department of Transport and Planning to complete that. And as council and the DTP currently own part of the land, we're each responsible for remediation of the parts we own. The investigation has, uh, the investigation report has been accepted by the EPA and the next step of is assessment of remediation options and a detailed remediation plan. Um, when this is prepared, it'll be submitted to the EPA and would be implemented after that. This is taking some time. Um, it is important that we work through each stage step by step. Uh, council remains committing committed to ensuring that any actions taken are in the best long-term interest of the community and the environment. And it has in its adopted budget for this year committed funds for remediation works at Clements Reserve. It is possible it may take longer than the current financial year before works start. We'll be able to confirm the timing as we go. Um, in terms of your second question, we don't have plans to release the detailed site investigation report. I can confirm it's been submitted to the EPA. We do plan to keep community up to date, uh, when council determines the remediation actions it will take.
Sorry, follow-up. Can you explain why you won't release the report?
Um, it's certainly not what we're planning at this stage. It's deeply technical. We think the appropriate, um, step to release information is is that as council determines its remediation actions.
Okay, can you move on to your third question now, Serena?
Thank you. Um, can Darabbin council explain what, if any, impact the new councillor internal dispute resolution procedure will have on the community complaints about a councillor policy? Sorry, it's a little obscure. I'm just trying to.
Carolyn, yeah.
Thank you, Serena, for your question and through you, Mayor. Um, so the the policy, the internal dispute resolution procedure, uh, Serena, this is a policy that was a requirement um, under the Local Government Act reforms. Um, and that act prescribed a process for managing complaints between councillors. The community complains about a councillor, um, the policy that you're referring to is, um, is a policy that supports the process for the community to complain about a councillor. There is potentially an overlap, but that assessment still needs to be, um, done. Um, the the policy has been in operations for about two years now. It's being reviewed at the moment. And there will be, um, there will be a revised policy that will be presented to council in the coming month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Serena. Uh, and next question is from Kashma Pillay, who is online. Um, Kashma's questions relate to the local shopping areas in Broadway and Edward Street. Have we got Kashma? Dropped off, so will we move on to the to the next one? Um, okay, uh, this is another person attending virtually. Um, Pre- Predrag Basik. Do we have them? Oh, there you are. Hello.
Hi. Um. Pretty good, pretty good on the name.
Great.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, so my name is Predrag. I live on Smith Street in Thornbury in an area that's newly designated as a substantial change area. And, uh, I only found out about the existence of the strategy by chance on Friday after a fellow resident posted about it in our Smith Street Community Facebook group. After speaking with many of my neighbours, I've found that none of them were aware of the strategy's existence or the proposed changes. My question is, why weren't all affected Darabbin residents made aware of the strategy and its proposed changes in writing by council? Um, in the document, in the Darabbin Housing Strategy, Conversation Company were engaged by Darabbin City Council to design it and support the delivery of an engagement programme, which they completed last year. My second question is, does council generally genuinely consider that a consultation outcome involving only 69 participating residents out of the entire Darabbin population represents sufficient community engagement for a 200-plus-page document of this importance? Um, I urge council to pause the approval of the housing strategy until a new and genuinely representative consultation process is undertaken. This must include clear written notification to all directly affected residents and an added and an additional round of consultation that ensures the community is properly informed and able to respond meaningfully. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Megan.
Thank you for your question, Predrag. Community participation in Phase Two of the housing strategy engagement was supported through a dedicated communications campaign using council's digital channels and distribution of material amongst community spaces. A range of place-based pop-ups, housing forums and online information sessions were offered, and council-led discussions were held with stakeholder groups, including 11 organisations represented at the Affordable Housing Forum. Phase Two built on the successful implementation of Phase One. Housing conversation engagement in 2022 in which 464 participants helped set the direction for the housing, for the draft housing strategy by sharing their values and aspirations for housing and their neighbourhoods. There will be a further Phase Three consultation where the community and stakeholders can have their say before the housing strategy is implemented within the Darabbin planning scheme. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, have we, has that person come back? No. Okay. Uh, we now have Melanie Delmonaco attending virtually as well. Hello, Melanie. Uh, go ahead. You've got two minutes to ask ask your questions.
Hi, Mayor and councillors. Um, my question also relates to the housing strategy being considered by council tonight. Particularly the large, um, section of central Thornbury from St George's Road to High Street, north of Normanby Avenue, which is now earmarked for significant change of up to six stories with no neighbourhood character policy mechanisms. So my questions are, what detailed analysis has been done to assess whether different parts of this stretch can be realistically, um, uh, supported with that level of density, particularly in terms of the physical capacity, um, infrastructure and street network constraints of this area? And why hasn't a more nuanced approach like the tiered zoning south of Normanby Avenue around Croxton Station um, been considered in this instance, given they have similar access to public transport and services? My third question, given the state government's announcement earlier this year identifying St George's Road and High Street as separate activity centre corridors, why has council preemptively filled in all of the expanse between these corridors with significant change? Um, with one of the highest density development categories well ahead of the state's draft that would outline where the core inner and outer activity zones would be located in Thornbury? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you for your questions, Melanie. The three questions relate to both the state government's Activity Centre Programme for the centres with and the draft housing strategy. These are separate projects and are underway that are considering the level of change appropriate within the municipality. The draft strategy notes that Thornbury Thornbury's High Street and St George's Road Activity Centres are the subject of a state planning process. The methodology for the proposed residential development framework that has been applied is consistent with the housing change area criteria. This criteria is based on directing change to the most walkable areas close to transport, shops and services. This shows us that the Croxton Station surrounds is further from the designated activity centres of Thornbury Neighbourhood Activity Centre and the Northcote Major Activity Centre, which is why there's a more nuanced zoning. The state will be responsible for finalising the zoning of the Thornbury catchment areas through the Activity Centre Programme. Council's housing strategy will apply to the areas outside the state's activity centres only. This means that ultimately the state will be responsible for the planning of the area of concern and the housing strategy's residential development framework will be updated to be consistent. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I think, uh, we've got one more. Uh, Leon Zimbekas. Leon has a question about fish. And Leon, if you can just stick to your questions, please, not no preamble.
Uh, there is an ongoing problem with invasive fish species in our waterways. Darabbin council's inability to permit fishing of these species out of our waterways goes against well-published scientific advice from Victorian Fisheries Authority, the VFA. Earlier this year, Darabbin council refused my written request for permission to fish carp out of our waterways, Edgars, Mary, Darabbin, Central Creeks and Yarra River. Uh, can I ask for a correction to be made in the first sentence to replace Thursday with 4th of September? A recreational fishing forum is being held at Preston uh, 4th of September, next Thursday, by the VFA.
Question, Leon? Can you move to the question, please?
Uh, can Darabbin council management and councillors and the supporters inform themselves by attending this Preston Northcote Angling Clubs forum to listen to the VFA and have the community attend at the club so we can protect our waterways and maybe even swim in them as the French did in the Seine only recently. And I'd like to be able to hand out the forum information for councillors to circulate it as if they're circulating their, uh, placards for election. And the staffers possibly like their handing out a job application to make this forum successful. Can I hand, can I hand these out?
If you just leave it at the, um, yeah, just leave it on there. We'll we'll pick it up afterwards. Okay. Uh, okay, Rachel.
Hi, Leon. Um, thank you for the question. I, your request, your invitation has been shared with our manager of natural and civic services. They'll circulate it and contact you directly about that. Um, I do want to reiterate that fishing is prohibited in Edwards Lake, Ed- sorry, Edwards Lake, Edgars Creek and Mary Creek. The main reason is because of the health risks associated with the water quality. Um, Edwards Lake was created in part to help treat stormwater from the nearby network of roads and properties. And that runs off from roads, roofs, gardens, construction sites and industrial areas. It carries pet faeces and pollutants that could have an industrial or sewage origin. And so primary or secondary recreational activities aren't allowed in the lake. That means fishing, swimming and boating aren't allowed. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, okay, we might go back to Kashma. She she's not come back, so maybe we'll just read her question out.
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor. Uh, Kashma has two questions regarding Edwards Street and Broadway and Reservoir. The first question is, what projects are currently being funded by Darabbin council to beautify reservoir? For example, planting more trees and flowers around our local shopping areas in Broadway and Edward Street. And the second question, where does one find more information regarding such projects?
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Kashma. Uh, the main improvements in the shopping areas planned for the current financial year are planting some canopy canopy trees at three sites on Edwards Street and one site on Spring Street. Garden bed maintenance is done all year round, including along Edwards and Broadway shopping centres. Um, there's been significant advancement over the last five years. Both council and state government have worked together, um, through the revitalising reservoir programme. Improvements over that time included around $100,000 for new plantings, over half a million dollars for upgrades at the intersection of Olive's Olive and Edwards Street, which included a crossing footpath and curbs. Updates to signage and bins, uh, trees and seating. In reservoir more broadly, over 180 trees were planted last financial year. And of course, the new station and new areas underneath the viaduct, which was a state government project, have um, also been a major uplift to the area. Certainly, we hope the improvements benefit the community for many years and our teams are now maintaining uh, those community spaces regularly. In terms of where you get more information, uh, there's some information on council's website, but it doesn't provide much about each project. I understand a council officer has been in touch with you directly today, Kashma. Um, and if you're seeking more information, we'll seek to assist.
Okay, that's the end of public question time. Thank you very much, everyone, for bringing your questions along and also to the staff, and particularly to Megan, who stepped in the last minute. Um, thank you very much for your help in answering the questions. Uh, all right, we have, uh, submissions this evening. There's, uh, governance rules permit members of the public to register to address an ordinary council meeting in relation to reports. council meeting in relation to reports listed on the agenda. And thank you to all of those people who have registered to do that. We have 15 submissions this evening. But we will hear those directly before the agenda item, so just wanted to let you know that. So I think they're mostly for the DCMC/MCMC item and for the housing strategy. But next on the agenda, we have a petition. And councillors, this is the only petition we have this evening. I'm going to remind councillors that in tabling a petition, you must confine yourselves to the statement of the person from whom it comes, the number of signatories to it, material matters expressed in it and the text of the petition. So councillor Dimitri Ardas, I believe you're going to present this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I seek to table the petition honouring a champion of multiculturalism, named the Darabben Intercultural Centre after councillor Gaetano Greco, to be referred to the CEO for consideration and response. The petition has been officially signed by approximately 109 people, as well as about 330 signatures online and documented separately, and complies with the council's governance rules. The petition reads as follows: We, the undersigned, respectfully submit this petition to Darabben council urging the council to name the Intercultural Centre in honour of the late councillor Gaetano Greco. Councillor Greco's unwavering commitment to public service and his lifelong advocacy for multiculturalism was instrumental in shaping the inclusive, diverse and vibrant community we cherish today. We request that this recognition be considered following appropriate consultation with councillor Greco's family and the Darabben Ethnic Communities Council, DEC, to ensure the naming is respectful and aligned with the values he championed. Councillor Greco served with distinction on the council for 16 consecutive years as an independent representative. Throughout his tenure, he championed the voices of everyday residents and worked tirelessly to promote unity, cultural understanding and community development. His decision to inclusive policymaking and grassroots engagement was instrumental in fostering a municipality where diversity is not only respected but celebrated. We believe naming the Intercultural Centre in councillor Greco's honour is a meaningful and appropriate tribute to his lasting impact. It would stand as a permanent reminder of the values he upheld and the inclusive vision he brought to life through many years of committed services. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dimitri Ardas. Do I have a second to the tabling of this petition? Thank you, councillor Velala. I'll now call on Agapi Pasios as the submitter of the petition to make a two-minute submission. Thanks, Agapi.
Mayor, councillors, council officers and community members, today we, as in DEC, bring forward this petition not just as a formality, but as a heartfelt request from a community that deeply values the legacy of councillor Gaetano Greco. Gaetano was more than a councillor. He was a neighbour, a listener, a tireless advocate for people whose voices were too often overlooked. For 16 years, he served Darabben with humility and determination, always guided by a belief in fairness, inclusion and respect for all cultures. The Intercultural Centre is a place where people come together to share, to connect and to celebrate our diversity. That is exactly what Gaetano stood for. Naming the centre after him would not only honour his service, but also ensure that his values live on in the heart of our community. This is not simply about remembering a past councillor. It is about creating a lasting reminder for future generations, that Darabben is strongest when we stand together, when we celebrate our differences and when we give everyone a voice. That is the legacy Gaetano leaves us, and that is what this centre should represent. We ask you to act on this petition with respect for his family and in consultation with the Darabben Ethnic Communities Council so the tribute is made with care. By naming the Intercultural Centre after councillor Greco, we ensure that his vision of unity and belonging continues to guide Darabben well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Agapi. I'm going to put that to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand, and that one's carried unanimously. Thank you. I believe we have a procedural motion about the order of the business, so we might jump there, and then I'm going to have an adjournment for a few minutes, so...
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so just looking to do a procedural motion under 9.2.1 to change the order of business so that we bring the Darabben Creek/Mary Creek item forward, given the number of interest here and that we've received in the last few days, so we can attend to that upfront. Thank you.
Do we have a second? Thank you, councillor Jolly. Put it to the vote. All in favour, raise your hand. It's carried unanimously. Sorry. We will now adjourn for 10 minutes, and we will come back at 7.04. Okay, thank you. The councillors will come out the back. Okay, everyone, we'll get started. If you want to grab your seats again, thank you for being patient. Have we got councillor Selkows back? Yes, we have. All right, we will bring the livestream back. Okay, so we're going to item 9.5 on the agenda, which is the management of Darabben Parklands and provision of creek corridor services beyond July 2026. We've had a number of requests to make submissions to this item, so in fact we've got 13 people. You get two minutes each, so when I call out your name, please come up to the lectern, or if you're online, please make sure you have your video and your microphone on, and you can commence your two-minute submission. So first up, we have Annette Solkeid. Thank you, Annette.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Annette Solkeid, the executive officer from DCMC. First, I'd like to acknowledge the time and effort of council staff and councillors in getting us to this point tonight, and thank you to the many community members who've supported us and continue to support us. Though for over two years, DCMC staff, volunteers and our community have been under a cloud of uncertainty, so we're glad to be here as well. Tonight's report presents two options for the ongoing stewardship of Darabben Creek Catchment and Parklands, a tender process or a long-term agreement with DCMC. From our perspective, there's no real rationale for tendering over a continued partnership, and we now know that there's no legal barrier to a direct long-term agreement either. DCMC was established by our member councils to collaborate, coordinate and deliver outcomes on behalf of the councils and the community. Our whole of catchment collaborative model aligns with best practice for waterway management and with First Nations principles. Our Whole of Catchment collaborative model aligns with best practice for waterway management and with First Nations principles. And we do not just provide land management and education services, we restore environments and build connections, we foster relationships and collaborations. Last year alone, our volunteers contributed over $180,000 in labour and we secured over $1.3 million in new partnerships and have secured nearly $1.2 million in federal funding as well, which all goes directly into the catchment. This builds on decades of experience and presence in the community and working with the community. And Darabben Council has been part of this from the very start. We also work with five similar not-for-profits under the Urban Waterway Alliance banner, including MCMC. We've met with state ministers, the Minister for Water and the Environment and government representatives who recognise the important role our organisations play in the management of waterways across Melbourne. And we ask who else would have such a history, relationships and community support for another provider who would be starting all of this by scratch?
You're done?
Yes, thank you.
Great timing. Okay, thanks very much, Annette. We've got Graham Hamilton next up.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr Graham Hamilton, I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of Darabben Parklands and the Friends of Darabben Creek. Both are community members of Darabben Creek Management Committee and I'm a member of both. The agenda paper is well-considered and constructive and we feel the officers responsible have listened and valued our views. Thank you. We strongly oppose an open tender as this risks oversimplifying the nuanced and complex stewardship roles that DCMC and MCMC have come to play in creek land management, community engagement and empowerment over more than 40 years. We feel it could also limit our ability in the future to innovate, to capture opportunities and directly meet challenges. Annette has just talked about the degree to which council funding is being leveraged to bring so much more funding in. We strongly support option two, which recognises that council can legitimately change its procurement policy, thus enabling direct agreements with the management committees. This goes well beyond the status quo. It's a great improvement as it would allow better and more accountable agreements to be formed by bilateral negotiations. It would give mid-to-long term security to funding, leading to more effective decisions and operations. And importantly, it would show a strong commitment to the partnership model that DCMC and MCMC are based on with all of the other organisations. They're watching what you're doing and watching what you're deciding. It's a partnership and always has been. As we move to respect and protect our waterways as single living entities, it's more important than ever to support DCMC and MCMC, which share this whole of catchment objective and which your predecessors founded and supported so enthusiastically. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bernadette Thomas?
Thanks, Mayor. So I'm Bernadette Thomas. I'm the CEO of Merrick Creek Management Committee. We understand that this report was written with DCMC as the focus and MCMC was included at the last minute. And I think it's an understatement to say that the Merrick Creek community is disappointed by this. Despite having only a short time to consider the proposal, MCMC's position is clear. We urge councillors to support the option to establish a policy exemption to allow direct engagement with DCMC and MCMC as other member councils currently do. This is the only option that respects the longstanding partnership between Darabben City Council and our two organisations and the respective communities that have led and supported our work for many decades. The open tender process risks losing much. The expertise built up over the long term, deep local knowledge and relationships, a long-term commitment to community-based leadership, a commitment to the local environment and support of local groups and opportunities, as Annette has outlined, to bring additional resources to improve the health of the creek and the catchments. The exemption will allow DCMC and MCMC to continue to undertake the coordinating role that is relied upon by our partners. Given MCMC's late addition, I do ask that councillors include a short period of discussion with MCMC prior to any work being undertaken. There must be an additional step for MCMC between the decision made tonight and any request for a proposal that may come. Collaborations such as DCMC and MCMC work with the community, government, non-government and private entities. Our grassroots nature enables innovative collaborations not easily facilitated by government or private operators. The Darabben and Merrick Creek communities have spoken, as I understand it, very loudly and very clearly. So, and we ask you to please support the exemption option tonight.
Thank you. Max Sergeant? Max here? Thank you, Max. Ray Radford?
Hello. Yes, first of all, full disclosure, I worked for Merrick Creek Management Committee for 28 years and am now retired two and a half years ago. I'm a life member of Friends of Merrick Creek and I recently joined Friends of Darabben Creek. So my experience of these organisations has led me to lots of plantings and weedings where lots of people have attended. And it's just so great to have this community involvement. And my main issue is that while I was working at Merrick Creek Management Committee, the city of Yarra subcontracted out its parkland management. And I don't know when this was, but my guess is about, you know, 12, 15 years, something like that. Since that time, the Friends of Merrick Creek did not work in the city of Yarra. Despite having been involved in some of the main plantings around Hall Reserve and alongside the Rush Oil Station, no more work was done. So this, sending it out to private contractors, they don't know anything about community involvement. They don't factor it into their budgets and I don't believe the number crunchers even consider it at all. But it's very important for us, our health, our physical and mental health and the ability to do some little thing for the environment, you know, is just so, so good. And so I'm urging you to please vote for option two because we need to include the community and the Merrick Creek Management Committee and Darabben Creek Management Committee know how to work with the community. Private organisations don't, you know, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I presume Tim Lawrence hasn't turned up? No. Linda Bradburn?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Linda Bradburn. I used to work at Melton Council for 11 years as the biodiversity education officer. And I have seen some of the untoward effects of tendering out biodiversity management, which is that you get areas of very precious flora and fauna that don't necessarily get looked after properly because the people who are looking after them don't have the skill. And you certainly don't get community engagement. Community engagement is a whole set of skills that people at MCMC and DCMC have developed over years. They know how to talk to people, they know how to be respectful. So I think that that idea of tendering out those sorts of services is really very untoward. I mean, the long-term care of our creeks is our caring for country. These organisations have very long, respectful relationships with the local Indigenous people, with the NARRIP team. It's not something that you just get a tenderer to walk into. So I really would strongly hope that option two is the one that the councillors support because otherwise the Darabben ratepayers are the ones who are going to suffer. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I've got David Taylor next.
Thanks, Mayor. David Taylor-Northcott. Assuming councillors do not wish to support option one, how might we reflect on this matter? Those keen to look for excuses may well point to the latitude given the issue by the previous council, Bannuel's role as provocateur or the notion that Darabben was duty-bound to act on Vago's 2022 advice. However, this administration cannot escape its share of responsibility for permitting this failed exercise in neoliberalism to persist. If we're to draw any lessons, there are two that stand out. First is the absence of decisive leadership. The scrutiny of DCMC began in 2016 via the Vecchi investigation. More recently, the idea of amending council's procurement policy was first suggested around 12 months ago at least. So successive councils have allowed this folly to meander along way past where it should have been nipped in the bud. Second is the related matter of absence of clear policy. The Labor platform for the 2024 election, that was otherwise very strong on supporting the council workforce, was silent on outsourcing. Hence, on reflection, this council came to the matter underprepared. And now it's back to square one. The suggestion that all that was required were simple procurement policy changes is exactly where the matter has landed. Yet hundreds of thousands of dollars have been wasted on expensive legal opinion, various inconclusive consultant reports and countless hours of officer time running down unnecessary rabbit holes. Councillors, if you do take a decision tonight to support option two, and I urge you to do so, please learn some lessons. The community expects leadership and political astuteness from you. Don't let sensitive issues meander along to the point where they discredit you, waste money and cause unnecessary harm to your community.
Thank you, David. We've got Serena O'Malley.
Thank you. I haven't prepared a specific submission. I just want to speak in favour of option two. It's absolutely self-evident that you don't want to throw away decades of social capital in pursuit of an unknown quantity that appears, as David says, to be driven by neoliberal economics. These are two incredibly important committees. They're highly valued by the community. And I can say that when the call went out on social media, there was a great deal of panic that anyone would think that it would be a smart move to hand over their work to some other unknown entities. So please support option two. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena. Carolyn Hunt?
Carolyn Hunt-Northcott. Thanks, Madam Mayor and councillors. I recall that reports from early 2025 painted DCMC as some arms-length organisation. It was portrayed as a separate legal entity that council had little or no control over. Given this remoteness, sorry, I've got a voice problem too, a case somehow existed to outsource their services via tendering. But now offer us a report to refer to DCMC and MCMC as organisations that council was founding member of. Moreover, they have objectives for environmental protection that completely align with those of council. My, how things have changed. However, there is a serious side to this, is that Darabben Council is never remote from DCMC and MCMC as a parenting signatory to the establishment of both. Darabben is a co-owner of these committees. The funding provided by council means it is councils who hold the first strings, no less. These are hardly circumstances of remoteness. But there is still a more important point. If these committees encounter problems or operate less than efficiently or are not meeting service expectations, then there is only one entity that must bear responsibility. Their committees of management. And who's on that committee of management? Why? All the members of the association. So far from being able to pass the buck and assign responsibility for shortcomings to the staff, it is councils that must face up to the fact that they bear ultimate responsibility if anything goes awry. If council wants better value for money from DCMC and MCMC, I suggest council should be more proactive as members. If you have concerns, ask the hard questions at meetings. Insist on accountability and make sure your grants are being well-spent. This is just a part of acting responsibly and in accord with the rules and purposes of organisation you brought into existence. In short, you're the parent, act like one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn. Catherine Rose?
Hi, my name is Kat and I'm a resident of Reservoir. I'm a member of Victorian Socialist Darabben. And like many locals, I love using Darabben and Merrick Creeks and their surrounding parks. They have been successfully managed as environmental resources by not-for-profits and volunteers. DCMC and MCMC, as others have said, are purpose-built organisations that have fought to protect and restore our green spaces through local knowledge and care, not the bottom line of some corporate tenderer. I think it's important to say again that that knowledge has been built up through long-term stewardship and it cannot simply be taken over by some new operator. So I'm urging councillors, like others here, not to open management of our creek up to commercial tender. Profit-driven operators will only do what they have done everywhere else that privatisation of public services has occurred. They will cut corners, they'll casualise labour and they'll provide worse services for higher costs, all for the point of skimming some profits out of our local creeks. There were comments earlier during the response to Question Time that community concern was based on anxiety around uncertainty. I just want to say that as far as I can see and from my point of view, concern is not based on feelings or uncertainty. It's based on knowing for certain that there are two options. One is between choosing our purpose-built, not-for-profit organisations and the other is to choose, is to choose commercial operation. I urge us to choose the organisations that have the skills, knowledge and relationships with the community to do the job. DCMC and MCMC have rightfully asked that they be allowed to get on with the job that they do best. That is managing our creeks with long-term certainty of its stewardship. So I'm urging again to please support option two for Darabben Creek.
Last person is online. We have Brendan Guring. Brendan hasn't joined us, so we will leave that. Thank you very much to everyone who made a submission, obviously very passionate about the great work that MCMC and DCMC does, as is this council, and we very much value your work. So, thank you. Councillors, do you have any questions of the officers regarding this item? No? Okay. If there's, oh. No, are there any further questions? We'll start the debate. And I see councillor Dimitriades would like to move a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the motion with a slight amendment to the officer's recommendation.
So that is the motion that's before us. Do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Jelly? Oh, sorry, councillor O'Brien. Does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I believe I have three minutes. Is that right? Yep, cool, thanks. Firstly, I'd like to thank DCMC and MCMC for their dedication and excellent work in improving biodiversity and coordinating the education and volunteer programmes across the Darabben Creek and Merrick Creek catchments. Since my first years as council representative on DCMC, I've seen the incredible work the staff and the volunteers do every day and I've been, and have been doing for decades. It's priceless. Yet, as the CEO Annette stated over two years ago, uncertainty about DCMC's funding arose that distressed many of us, especially the organisation itself, as Darabben Council was evaluating options for the future management of the Darabben Parklands and Creek Corridor. To guide the decision-making process, council undertook community consultation about the future management of the parklands. The results expressed high satisfaction with the current management model provided by DCMC, particularly valuing its ecological stewardship, visible ranger presence and commitment to community involvement. There was a low appetite for change, especially towards open tendering or commercialisation. Thank you to all community members who took part in this survey, to the Friends Group, the volunteers and everyone who has sent us emails, messages and called us to express their support for the incredible work DCMC does. and called us to express their support for the incredible work DCMC does. This has been a long journey. But tonight, after over two years of uncertainty for DCMC, council is finally in a position to offer some certainty. I am proposing that council adopts option two from the officer's report to establish a policy exemption to allow direct engagement with DCMC and MCMC for long-term security, a period of 10 years. This will ensure that our creeks, our parklands, and the dedicated people who care for them are safeguarded against any potential future instability. The alternative is pretty unthinkable, as Kathy Offness, the member for Northgate, recently stated and who has also been advocating for long-term security for both DCMC and MCMC, along with many other community members for the past two years. So I'm asking all councillors to support this motion to finally give long-term security to DCMC and MCMC to not-for-profit, council-founded organisations who care for our creeks and parklands. It's about time.
Does the seconder wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We've heard a lot as councillors in the last few days from the community. This item has definitely generated strong community interest tonight as well here in the chamber. It's great to hear from everybody and thank you so much for the time taken to make us understand how appreciated these organisations are. We knew anyway, but it's always great to hear it, obviously. I think what I'm trying to do is give a bit of context to where we found ourselves as a group of almost completely new councillors, seven of nine of us a few months ago. And since we came to this matter after our election, we've been working through the complex timing and policy questions before us. The timing was impacted by the MOU with DCMC being due to expire sooner. So that's where the immediate focus was. And in February, we unanimously extended the MOU by one year to June 26 to give us the space to resolve this matter properly. The MCMC agreement also expires next year, but with more time available when this work began back in the previous council term, it wasn't included in the early focus. On the policy, the initial advice received was that in line with our procurement policy, both organisations, being legally separate from council, would ordinarily require an open tender. But as our conversations progressed, that didn't feel aligned with council's intent in helping establish these organisations, so further options were tested. We recently received confirmation that council could amend its procurement policy to allow an exemption. Given the time to reach this point, it now makes sense to consider both organisations together. Though I acknowledge that this has meant a lack of consultation with MCMC and that gap needs to be managed carefully as we proceed. So with that quick summary of context, I now move to the choice before us in the officer report. We can choose the open tender process to have current and new work out to other providers or recognise the proven unique value that MCMC and DCMC deliver in their creek corridors. The entities were established for this purpose. They are not-for-profits returning direct value to the community. They deliver coordinated catchment management and best protects biodiversity, and they work strongly with traditional owners. These are the reasons I'm supporting option two tonight, to secure the continuity of values alignment, best practice environmental stewardship for our community, and I encourage all councillors to do the same. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any councillors who wish to speak against the motion? No. Okay. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Jelly? And then councillor Sangster. We'll go to councillor Jelly first.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody. I mostly wished to rise this evening to thank those who have put in their time and effort for their advocacy for the wonderful work that Darabin Creek Management Committee and Mary Creek Management Committee do with our wonderful natural environment and extend councillor O'Brien's. Thanks to everybody who's taken the time and put in the effort to come and speak genuinely about what is obviously a very great passion for all of you this evening. I do thoroughly support the officer's recommendation for option two and the slight changes proposed by councillor Dimitriades this evening. And I'd just like to conclude by thanking the officers for the dedicated work that they have done to bring these options to us. They have worked very closely with us and heard the concerns that we have relayed through to them from you as well over many months now. And I feel a great sense of pride and calm that we're able to reach this point and take this action which represents not only good governance but really reflects our community's values and really shows what it is that we have been brought together here as a community to do and shows that our community really does shine in circumstances like this when they come together. And also just to thank everybody for participating in local government democracy. Some people think it's the nerdiest thing in the world. It probably is one of the nerdiest things in the world, but it is actually really valuable and your voice really does make a difference. So thank you very much for your contributions.
Thank you. Apologies. I do believe councillor Velela wanted to make an amendment? Could we bring that up? Okay, so it's an addition of the points two and three there. Can I go back to councillor Dimitriades and just check that you're okay with that addition?
Yes.
You are? And the seconder was councillor O'Brien? You happy with that addition?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll continue to vote, would you?
Can I speak to it? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the seconders. Thank you councillor Dimitriades. And also thank you to the residents who have come tonight and given us their heartfelt responses and experiences. I've been a councillor for less than a week and I think this particular gender item has broken some record in relation to the amount of emails and community engagement. And I have to admit that I knew very little about the organisations at hand. And the more I've learnt, the more I realise that something was wrong. And I think there was some hurt that was done and we need to rectify it. And I think the rectifying and the hurt wasn't addressed in the original motion. So I think my amendment speaks to a weakness and we need to acknowledge, after all that we've heard from the experts on this matter, that obviously it was very distressing. And it was also probably offensive because we are talking about the experts and they're mostly volunteers who care very deeply and have committed a lot of time and energy in achieving what no for-profit company could achieve. And I sat here, and I'm sure with all the councillors feeling aggrieved, that this process that went on for far too long and probably what I've heard, wasted a lot of resources and was probably, you know, could have been done a lot briefer with less hurt. So I want to acknowledge that. And I think we acknowledge that the process to get this decision has taken some time. We won't go into the detail as to why, but it has caused distress and threw uncertainty to the DMC and the community. And I really felt for the community today and I want to kind of say sorry for what has gone on. And that's one of the reasons why I think there was a weakness in the motion. And hopefully that will address the emotion of what we heard tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Over to you councillor Sangster. I believe you had your hand up. You're still willing to speak?
Yes, thank you, three, Mayor. Apologies for not being there in person. I have influenza. It's very exciting. Yes, I'm just wanting to speak in support of option two, which is not just about procurement rules, it's about honouring the lifeblood of our city, our creeks, and our waterways. DCMC and MCMC carry decades of knowledge, deep community trust, and most importantly, living partnerships with the Rarangirwirarang Narap team. If we open this work to tender, we risk losing the legacy to the lowest bidder. If we choose option two, which I'm hoping we will, we embed continuity, care, and cultural respect. Our creeks are not commodities, they are ecosystems, they're habitats, and they are sacred. They're sacred places and they demand long memory and steady hands in their care. DCMC and MCMC can leverage grants and philanthropic funding that council can't even begin to get around. They bring more than service delivery, they bring stewardship and restoration and belonging. They bring community to community with community. Option two is legally sound, it's ethically strong, and it's environmentally wise. By amending our policy to allow direct engagement, we ensure consistent management across the waterways because as we are recognising, it's all one body of water. I strongly support this motion and I give thanks to the officers for their fantastic work in presenting us with an option that has justice and common sense at its heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Has anyone else got anything to say? Or it sounds like we're all in furious agreement here, so shall we move to a vote? Yes? Okay. All those in favour of the proposed amendment, please raise your hand. And that's... Oh, yep. Okay. And that's carried unanimously. So thank you all for your time this evening. Yeah, if you could just scroll up so people can see the whole thing. Is that what you're asking? Yep, okay. We are, however, moving on to the next item, which is the housing strategy.
Mayor, I'd like to go-
Members of the gallery, you are very welcome to stay if you would like to. But otherwise, you're also welcome to leave if you'd like to. So whichever way you'd like to go with that. We do have a couple of people who have got submissions.
Mayor, I'd like to move a procedural motion. We'll take a short five-minute adjournment before we address the next item.
Okay. All right. Have we got a seconder? Is there a seconder for that one? Yep, okay. All in favour? Okay. All right. Five-minute adjournment. Thank you. Okay, councillors, if you could take your seats, please. We'll get started. If we can open up the meeting again. Hello, everyone. We're back. Okay, we're on to the Darabin housing strategy. And this is part one and two of the strategy, and there is a third part that will be coming in the future. We've got two requests for people to make submissions to this item. Could we just ask for people's... If you could leave the door open, please. We just need to ask the people outside maybe to lower the noise level a little bit. Thank you. Okay. So we've got two requests to make submissions. So the first person is online, I believe. Yeah, and it's Predag Basix online. Are you there? No? We don't have... Okay. Then we've got Melanie Delmonaco also online. Here's Melanie. Hi, Melanie. Yep, so go ahead. You've got two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. Housing is undoubtedly one of the biggest challenges, both council and the state government. And good planning is essential- and good planning is essential to ensure that growth doesn't come at the expense of livability. While the strategy includes some positive elements, I'm deeply concerned about the low level of community engagement. Fewer than 70 people across Darabben contributed to this strategy, that's an alarmingly small base for such a significant policy. Specifically, I also want to raise urgent concerns about the reclassification of the entire section of central Thornbury, north of Normanby Avenue between St George's Road and High Street as a substantial change area. This classification would allow buildings up to six stories with no neighbourhood character protections in place. Following the state government's announcement of Thornbury as an activity centre, some level of change was anticipated. However, messaging on this has consistently referred to change along two locations, the St George's Road and the High Street corridors. This strategy however seems to signal to the state government that everything in between these corridors should now also be considered for substantial change without community consensus or a clear infrastructure plan. This approach overlooks the nuance of local built form and the varied infrastructure capacity within this large and diverse precinct. Streets west of the railway line like Valentine, Smith and Harold are narrow and tightly constrained with limited east-west connectivity. Given the physical constraints of these streets, an incremental change classification is far more appropriate. The strategy also misrepresents this area's physical suitability for high-density development. Most of the lots west of the railway line between Normanby and Hutton are single-fronted and well under 500 square metres, these are not large, uniform redevelopment blocks. I urge council to pause approval of this strategy and undertake further work, particularly for this central Thornbury area, to ensure a more informed, community-driven, nuanced and contact-sensitive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, that's, I think that's the only submission then. Have we got the other person on? Thank you Melanie, really appreciate that. Okay, councillors, do you have any questions of the officers regarding this item? councillor O'Turrie?
Thank you Mayor, I was just wondering, in terms of the structure of the housing strategy, it's been split into part one, two and three and we're adopting part one and two this evening, can officers explain what the purpose of part three is?
Thanks for the question and through you Mayor. So part three of the housing strategy relates to a future affordable housing and homelessness strategy and this is identified as an action in the council plan due to start in year two of the council plan, which would be next financial year. So that's, that would be a separate strategy to this primary parts one and two housing strategy, which is all about directing land in the private housing development market, whereas an affordable housing and homelessness strategy would be about the levers that council can influence relating to how we get more affordable and social housing in Darabben.
Thank you, councillor Vella, you got a question?
Yes, just a quick one, just in addition to that, I'm just wondering, have we had any consultation on part three yet or is that a completely separate process?
Thanks for the question and through you Mayor. As part of the phase two community engagement in 2023, which was around August last year, sorry, 2024, we conducted an affordable housing forum, which was with the, the community providers who provide services, so housing associations and also the providers that support homelessness, community that attended that housing forum and provided some advice and that feedback will be used to start to prepare part three, affordable housing strategy.
Sorry, sorry Mayor, just to be clear, sorry, was there, apart from the different organisations, was there any, were there any members of the community, just general members of residents?
Thanks for the question and through you Mayor. There was also as part of that community consultation, a survey which asked the broader community questions relating to, I believe there was an affordable housing related question as part of that survey, so yes, we did receive feedback from the broader community too.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions people would like to ask? Okay, do we have a mover of the motion, councillor Jolly?
Yes, thank you through you Mayor, I'd like to move the motion that I proposed that I circulated earlier today.
Do we have a second for this motion?
Sorry. Mayor, I've got a question of governance for this item. According to motion for, clause four of the governance rules, it says that in the interest of transparency and informed decision-making, motions or amendments should not introduce new matters to debate that have not been subject to the report or background of the motion being considered by council. I believe point, I think it's point five moving down, talks about, oh, rather, six, talks about part three, which is not the, which is not the topic of conversation today, same as part seven as well, so they should be for another, for when we actually get part three back, so could you make a decision on that?
Thank you. So I think the point is valid, but it was a governance question, so.
So I'm also looking at our planning people to make sure that they will give me an indication if they think I'm off track, they know the content of the report and attachments in great detail, the reference to public housing will be somewhere in the documents, but that is not the primary purpose of this part, first two parts that are presented to council tonight, so it will be referenced, but it's not, as I said, the core, part of the core focus in the first two parts. And I think the same would apply to the part point seven.
Okay, so I presume we then remove six and seven from that motion?
Mayor, can we get some clarification please, given the report, so the motion is just calling for our letter to the minister and to MPs to express our support-
It's just been a call made on this, that it doesn't meet the governance rules, so that's the issue, so we are asking that you remove bits in red under six and item seven.
I do object, sorry, under point seven, the, the housing strategy actually does go to the core of amenity for residents in Darabben and I'm not quite sure why we're suddenly saying that the amenity for residents who live in apartments-
Mayor, I don't think this is a debate.
Sorry, can I please continue my statement? I don't think that making a call on, or carving out the amenity for residents is something that should be ignored as part of this overall strategy. This is actually referenced under direction, strategic direction 3.1 of the strategy and point six, that is actually mentioned under direction, strategic direction 3.2 of the strategy.
Thank you councillor Jolly, you've had your say, but a call has been made on this, so these will be able to be looked into in the next strategy, we will have community feedback that will come to us in relation to that strategy as well, so I think that's the best place for us to continue, so if you would like for us to remove these and continue with this motion, are you happy for that to occur? Otherwise, we'll see any other motions.
I guess this use force, force my hand is very disappointing, but yes, I'll remove the items in red from point six, disappointingly, remove point seven and that will require a bit of renumbering, so point eight now becomes point seven.
So can we fix that on the screen? Oh, they're crossed out, okay. Okay, a second up. councillor O'Turrie, thank you, would the mover like to speak to the motion?
Yes, very dearly, I'd like to speak to this. So I'm moving this motion to commend Darabben City Council and our community who have helped shape the strategy for bringing us this bold and thoughtful housing strategy. This is a plan that recognises the urgent need for, to respond to the housing crisis with solutions that are sustainable, inclusive and community-led. The strategy as a whole sets out a clear and, sets out clear and ambitious goals. It directs housing growth to areas with access to services, infrastructure and public transport. Sadly, a significant proportion of reservoir is considered to be in a public transport desert and hence Darabben council must continue to advocate for increased public transport services as well as an increased investment in active transport. This strategy plans for the delivery of, delivery of infrastructure that meets the needs of our growing population. When increasing housing diversity and affordability, we must ensure that new development supports climate resilience and design excellence and this strategy needs to be a roadmap for healthier, fairer and more sustainable Darabben. Importantly, the strategy acknowledges that housing is not just buildings, it's about building communities. By seeking developer contributions for open space and community infrastructure, council is ensuring that growth enhances livability rather than undermining it. This is a human-centred and equitable approach and one that I hope the state government will take seriously. The strategy also prioritises affordability and sustainability. It encourages diverse housing types, supposes alternative tenure models and promotes environmentally sustainable design and these are the kind of policies that we need to see scaled up across Melbourne and throughout Victoria. I also welcome the strategy's commitment to climate resilience, however, I believe that we can go further and hence some of the amendments that I've put up here this evening. Landscaping and canopy coverage elements should be targeted at areas of Darabben that experience high heat island vulnerability. Climate change adaptation must be better integrated into decision-making about the design and location of new residential developments. These changes will help support the resilience of our community and protect vulnerable residents. Transport is another critical issue and one that you and I are very passionate about. The strategy rightly continues to advocate for improved public transport services, but we must also push for greater investment in active transport and this includes better transport connections for areas that I mentioned before that are quite woefully lacking in infrastructure, public transport services. I encourage council to explore the development of, in, in future planning scheme review processes, to explore the development of bicycle parking standards to accommodate a greater variety of bicycle types, including cargo bikes, which are becoming increasingly popular among Darabben residents. And for those who are a bit unfamiliar about what this might mean, that is an indication that, so cargo bikes are longer and wider, yes, I will wrap up Mayor. And so therefore the types of bicycle parking that is traditionally provided usually doesn't know how to accommodate these and they do need to be provided safely within our housing, so I commend this motion to you all, thank you.
Thank you, would the second like to speak?
Yeah, I will, thank you Mayor. I also want to thank officers for their work and to the community for their participation in the community consultation that took place on the housing strategy from August to September last year. The feedback that we received from that, of course, was general support for more housing, better quality and greener development, all the way to concerns about the impact of increased densities upon infrastructure, in particular traffic congestion. We understand that we're in a housing crisis and we need to do what we can with the levers that we have as a council at our disposal to ensure that we are meeting targets and managing residential growth sustainably and appropriately. We also recognise the need for more housing in and around our city and we recognise that residents and their families want to live close to each other and have access to shops, transport and other community services. The strategy also addresses the importance of neighbourhood character in areas not covered by heritage overlays, particular interest to reservoirs, to residents rather, in parts of Elphington North West Reservoir and articulated in action 18 of the strategy. Some of the amendments to the officer recommendations that have been moved on the screen this evening and want to take this opportunity to thank councillors who collaborated to find this common ground include addressing concerns related to public and transport infrastructure, addressing creek and addressing tree canopy issues in areas on high heat island vulnerability. I also want to note, as I inquired about at the beginning of this debate, about part three, the housing strategy, that is proposed to be prepared in accordance with the council plan that we adopted in, at the end of June, which includes the action and finalising and implementing a roadmap for increased social and affordable housing in Darabben, which of course we all support. I want to thank officers again for their support and I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you councillor O'Turrie. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the motion? Any other speakers? councillor O'Brien?
Thank you Mayor. The strategy in the parts that we have before us outlines that the scale of Darabben's housing challenge is stark and this strategy helps us to take a clearer and stronger approach in the vital years ahead. The strategy informs us that we have around 3,600 social housing dwellings, yet almost 10,700 households need assistance, that leaves us more than 7,000 homes short and by 2036, this gap is expected to grow to over 11,000. The strategy sets the groundwork for change and while the detailed mix of housing is explored here and affordability will be explored further in the next stage, strategic direction 3.2 highlights affordable housing as a key priority. And it's important to remember that this includes public housing, community housing and subsidised market housing, all of which have a vital role to play and in today's housing crisis, we need every one of these solutions. Adaptation is another critical focus and in directions 2.5 and 8.3, we, we hear about adaptation in its various forms. The updated flood mapping that we'll, we'll discuss later in tonight's agenda is part of this and shows how urgent it is to plan for climate risks, especially as related to flooding in our built environment. Stronger standards and clear strategy will protect homes, businesses and council assets into the future. I also acknowledge the complexity and timing with some of the overlap between this work and activity centres planning by the state government. That overlap has understandably caused concern in the community and we need to manage that openly and respectfully as we move forward. In short, this strategy is not the end, not the endpoint, but a vital step forward addressing the housing crisis and climate adaptation challenges before us to get the right mix to suit our environment and our community, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we might move to the vote if we don't have anyone else with a burning desire to speak. Okay, fantastic, all those in favour of this amendment, please raise your hand. Online people, yep, that's unanimous, thank you. All right, the next item is the High Street street scape upgrade. So councillors, do you have any questions of officers in relation to this item? No? So if there's no further questions, we will commence the debate, just reminding you once we enter debate, there are no further questions. Do we have someone willing to put forward this motion? councillor Jolly, secondaire councillor O'Turrie, okay. Does the mover want to speak to the motion?
Yes, I do, I've-
I should say I should wait to see what option councillor Jolly puts forward before I seconded.
I think it's what's on the screen, right? We're talking about?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry. Which option?
Yes, option four, yes, option four is the one that I endorse, is that councillor O'Turrie, you're on board with option four? Amazing, I should have used that time, I'm trying to look for my speech notes, I'm just going to have to keep it short. Thank you very much to the officers for, you know, going through this consultation with our community. I think the thing that stood out for me the most with reading through this report, as disappointed as I am personally that we're not going to have, there's not enough room in there for bike lanes, you know, maybe we'll just need a TARDIS. The, the message that unanimously and very strongly came through from our community is that they want more room to walk around, to roll around with their mobility devices on the footpaths and they just want somewhere that they can move easily through, walk through. A lot of people, a really surprising number of people actually walk through to this central area of Preston and that is something that we must have designed for, for the future, so to future-proof this central area of Preston, which is that beating thriving heart of Darabben, we must ensure that it is a walkable, livable space. And so option four presents us with the best option to move forward with that, but alas, we don't have a heap of money down the back of the couch, we would need quite a very big couch in order to find the money down the back of the couch to, to fund all this and so we are asking our CEO to do some hard work to identify and advocate to state and federal counterparts. advocate to state and federal counterparts for any future funding opportunities to deliver this vision that has been brought forward. So this vision really does embody the diversity of our community, and I think the officers have done a wonderful job, and I can't thank them enough. And I thank everybody who contributed to the consultation, online, in person, pop-ups and all of those other methods that were engaged through. So I encourage everybody to have a read-through the report so they can see what this vision looks like for themselves, and I look forward to releasing this and seeing what the feedback we get in the next round of community engagement for option four. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. Would the seconda like to speak?
Very briefly, Mayor, thank you very much. I too rise to speak in support of option four, and councillor Jelly outlined very nicely the rationale behind option four, but I guess some highlights that are included in the officer's report in relation to option four, widened footpath, councillor Jelly outlined the importance of that in terms of getting around and those areas along High Street, increased land and space for landscaping, including new trees, street furniture and seating arrangements there, which is particularly important on High Street. I note some of the other options would have gotten rid of a lot of the trees, in particular down the middle median strip, which I don't think would have been very nice at all. So it is, I think, the best option out of the four, and also I think it's important in clause four that we call on our state and federal colleagues to come to the table and assist us in delivering this very important project for the people of Preston and also the broader Darabben community who use that area. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and we do have a little muck-up with the time clock, but I think we're back on track. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Councillor O'Brien?
Just very quickly, Mayor, to say, as others have said, the number of people who have contributed so far as we've come to this point in the conversation, and looking forward to seeing the community, I guess, interrogate this particular option if we do agree to put it forward. I'd like to particularly thank the members of the LGBTQI plus committee who had a very robust conversation around this a few months ago, and their views are very interesting and important to us. Safety and comfort in terms of being able to access the street, enjoy the street, feel safe in the environment came through really strongly as part of that conversation, and has really landed well here, I think. The last bit I'd like to just reflect on, given the other benefits that have been discussed already, is the trialling of new surface treatments and recycled products, which I know is of interest to you as well, of interest to all of us, I'm sure, but I guess as somebody who in my day job gets to hear about researchers that are putting every type of waste imaginable into concrete and paving products these days, there are a lot of new things available to us in the market, and so it'll be really exciting to see what we can do here and actually create something that can support some of the other things that we've talked about tonight, the adaptation needs that we've got in the communities of permeable substances that can actually help us manage the flooding or the excessive rain that we might experience. So I think it's an exciting proposition for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? So maybe just before we go to the vote, I might just say a few words myself, so given this is actually in the ward that I represent, but also of course is an area, as councillor O'Turrie said, that people from all over Darabben come to. It's a really exciting project, yeah, I think, I don't think you can undersell that. It has potential to really transform High Street. And while it does rely on funding from other places to support us in this, it will deliver a really vibrant, a really attractive and accessible street, and people will have seen, you know, if you're walking up and down High Street, that there just aren't enough pedestrian crossings and that you see people with, you know, walking aids with prams trying to get up and down the median strip, and so this will really help for all people to make it really accessible. We'll have wider footpaths, new trees and seating, additional pedestrian crossings, as I've said, so just make it easier and safer for people to get around on High Street. It will bring more visitors to the area. There's also more parking, so it will mean, I think, a boost to our local business, both by people on foot, but people who might come here from other areas. So High Street will become a place where even more people want to spend time, so I also strongly encourage you councillors to support this motion. So we might go to the vote now, is that okay with everyone? Okay, all in favour of this motion with option four, raise your hand. And that's carried unanimously, so thank you, everyone. We're moving to item 9.3, this is declaration of a special charge SolarSaver Round 4.2. So anyone got any questions in relation to this report of the staff? No? Okay, we will jump into the debate. Do we have a mover for the motion? Councillor O'Brien, thank you. Do we have a seconda? Councillor Velella, would the mover like to speak?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, we'll be moving the officer recommendation, given how technical it is, I'm not going to mess with this one. I do just want to take time, though, given this is the last batch we will be approving for this programme, I want to highlight a few points for our community watching now or later as to some of the history that some may not be aware of from this fantastic initiative. At the 23rd of June council meeting, we resolved to extend the programme beyond the 30th of June deadline that was looming, by two months to cover just three applicants in this round. So with this now before us for approval, this marks the formal end of the SolarSaver programme as we've known it, and given that, it's worth reflecting on its significant achievements. Almost 2,000 households and many local businesses have benefited, lowering energy bills and cutting carbon right across Darabben. The programme has been complex in management requirements, yet beautifully simple in its outcomes. It's provided tangible climate and economic benefits right here in Darabben while inspiring other councils to follow our lead. There are two streams, the bulk buy for those paying upfront and special charge programme where council covers upfront costs and households repay over 10 years. This model allowed people to spread the equipment and installation costs while delivering immediate benefits to their households. Over time, officers ensured access to the best technologies and rebates, supporting renters, lower income households, pensioners, people with disabilities, refugees and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander residents. Even in this final small batch, the equipment to be installed is expected to avoid around 18 tonnes of carbon annually, which is equivalent to taking eight cars off our roads, as we are informed in the report. All participants in this batch are in Reservoir, reflecting the strong uptake across the north in recent rounds, where we have seen high proportion from Preston and Reservoir. As the programme has wrapped up, I want to sincerely thank the dedicated staff who manage the technical, contractual and legislative complexities behind the scenes with this one. Your work has empowered our community to take real action on climate change and save money that could be used in other ways or save for a rainy day. By way of a fond farewell, I am going to do this, wow, I'd like to share a cheeky little ode to a mighty programme. Rays collected on roofs, bills decline, Darabben's homes now brightly shine. Thank you.
Councillor Velella? Just very quickly, I think if I recall correctly, this re-initiated, or this was an initiative that was brought into council when I was on council many, many moons ago, and it won awards, it was nationally recognised, it was transformative, and I was on the committee with Trent and council and CEDIS, and I, and credit to the council officers at the time because being from Reservoir, I said, look, if you're going to introduce this, which is great, you have to actually be able to communicate to non-English speaking background people, and door-to-door, and explain it and demystify it, and to the officers' credit, they did that, and Reservoir got the highest uptake. It was fantastic. And I said to them, don't worry about going into climate change details about climate change and global warming, don't talk about that, talk about how much money they're going to save, because it's about dollars and cents, because we are talking about people who might be asset-rich but cash-poor. So that spoke their language, and now they're all, of course, into climate change and are very strong advocates, but to get them hooked into it, we had to talk about dollars and cents, and it was really a great programme. And so I commend the motion, I think it's, I think we really need to go back into history. It was, Darabben was really at the forefront of some really exciting stuff, so it's a pleasure to second this, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Velella. I'm gonna, is there anyone who wishes to speak against the motion? Okay, I'm going to suggest we just go to the vote on this now then. All those in favour, please raise your hand, and that's passed unanimously, thank you, everyone. The next item we have is the draft road management plan for community consultation. Does anyone have any questions of the officers in relation to this? Councillor Jelly?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mayor. Just wanted a clarification on whether, when you're talking about the road management and that asset management, does that include the footpaths as well? So I mentioned there's a mention of they're not including paths that go through parks, so I guess the main question is, is this going from like sort of like building property, building property kind of across the street, that whole space that we're talking about? I apologise, I did this to the same officer last month, asked the question before they'd entered the room.
Thank you, councillor, through you, Mayor. So yes, it does go from building to building, depending on the road that it supports, it goes to the yellow line, so it's 500 mils from the tram line, but the idea is it goes from building to building, so yes.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a mover of a motion, councillor O'Turrie? Do we have a seconda? Councillor Jelly? Would the mover like to speak?
Dynamic duo this evening, councillor Jelly. Yes, I'd like to move the officer's recommendation, please, Mayor. Sorry, I should have said that before, but yeah. Thank you. I want to thank officers for their work in preparing the draft RMP for the next four years and for preparing it to go out to the community for consultation. The road management plan outlines how council will identify and repair hazards in the road network, potholes and other defects like that on footpaths and so forth, and also vegetation blocking sightlines and so forth. Initial council meets its duty of care and risk management obligations. As someone who deals with road management plans across various local government areas, not Darabben, it is really important that council strike the balance between the standards, or upholding the standards of footpaths and roads and so on, and also council's ability to actually implement those standards. So I think we've struck the balance here, in particular noting that the report states that we can meet it with our budgetary and operational constraints. It's also great to see that we are committing to significantly improved response times for roads and footpaths and the like, and it's really important, this is a really important step to improving amenity and livability right across the city. And of course, it's now being released, assuming passage of the motion, to the community for consultation, so I would encourage everyone to have their say on council's channels. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Jelly, would you like to speak?
I'll reserve my right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, does anyone else like to, or would anyone like to speak in opposition to the motion? Anyone else like to speak? Still no? Okay, we've got to the vote then. All those in favour, raise your hand. Carried unanimously, thank you. Next item is council preparedness ahead of the future update of the Melbourne Water flood modelling across its catchment. Do you have any questions, councillors? No? Okay, do I have a mover of the motion? We have, oh, no, we do not, we have the motion coming up. Councillor Sangster, thank you. Do we have a seconda for the motion? I'm going to go with councillor O'Brien.
Yep.
There was a few hands went up at once there, so, okay. Councillor Sangster, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to speak in support of the officer recommendation. Melbourne Water is updating its flood modelling, and once this new data is released, council has both a duty of care and a legal obligation to act. This recommendation ensures that we are ready, so I thank the officers for their work. It supports clear communication so our community knows what's coming and how they can participate and make the best decisions for their futures and what it means for their homes and future developments. It directs us to make a strong submission back to Melbourne Water so Darabben's voice is heard, and it confirms our statutory responsibility to designate flood-prone land when the evidence is available. We all know with climate change that the map, all the maps are rapidly changing, and so it's really important that we're as up-to-date as we possibly can be. In recent years, we've encouraged applicants to plan with draft information, this policy takes the next step, it's really important, using robust data to guide building permits, town planning and local drainage management. It's about smarter decisions, safer neighbourhoods and future-proofing against climate change. And supporting this recommendation means that council is prepared, transparent and proactive in protecting our community from flood risk, so I strongly recommend it to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Sangster. Councillor O'Brien, did you want to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to draw attention, in addition to what councillor Sangster has shared with us, one of the reasons this work is so important, Melbourne Water obviously have been working on this for some time and engaged with us as a council and other councils that they're working with to do this. It's so important for the safety of our communities that we get this right, that we understand this well and that we're applying it properly through our planning provisions into the future. But I just wanted to draw attention to the State Emergency Service as an organisation, you know, that works locally to help in these emergency response situations. If we get this right, Melbourne Water get this right, we help our community understand it and we're working towards it into the future. We will see increasing floods or heavy rainfall events through the impacts of climate change, and the State Emergency Services are at the forefront of that, helping the community in those situations. So anything we can do as a council to shore up how we deal with this in our planning means we're all taking responsibility for this and sharing the load as we address these issues into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this motion? Is anyone opposed to us moving to the vote at this point? Okay, all those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand, and we have that carried unanimously, thank you. We have the governance report next. So councillors, do you have any questions in relation to the governance report? Okay, so if there's no further, no questions, we're gonna, there is a question? Oh, oh, do I have a mover to of this motion which is coming up? Councillor Dimitriadis, did you put your hand up?
Sure.
Do we have a seconda? Go on, councillor O'Turrie, very good. Okay, does a mover wish to speak?
Sure, just very briefly, this is something that comes to us every month, it notes a couple of new points, welcomes councillor Angela Velella to the following committees which are listed there, which used to be councillor Greco's committee. We've also got a motion that the mayor has written for the MAV State Council, which I think councillor O'Turrie will talk about as well, and just a few other reports that we normally have every meeting. So thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor O'Turrie.
I love a good governance report, Mayor. I love a good governance report, Mayor. Thank you. And as usual, thank you to the officers for preparing the report. As councillor Demetriadis said, there are a few interesting items in the report. First of all, I do want to take the opportunity to welcome councillor Velella to the chamber, or back to the chamber, rather. And of course, endorse her appointment to the committees listed on the screen there. And it is quite fitting that she will replace her predecessor, the late Gaetano Greco, on those committees. And I wish her all the very best and look forward to working with her as a neighbouring councillor. As councillor Demetriadis pointed out, at clause 10, there is of course submitting a motion to the MAV State Council, which will be held in October. And I want to thank you, Mayor, for bringing that to this meeting and thank the officers for working this into the governance report. The motion does call for the MAV to advocate to Victorian Government to reinstate the office for women in sports. They did great work, including grants programmes, promotion of gender equity in sports and supporting women's leadership in sports as well, in addition to the other elements listed on the screen. And it is important that the MAV call on the Victorian Government to reverse their funding decision in this regard. And I'd be very pleased to support that motion when it comes before the MAV State Council on the 10th of October. And apart from that, as I said, I love a good governance report and I commend it to the chamber. Thank you.
Not, is anyone wanting to speak against the motion? No. In favour of the motion, go ahead, councillor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I just thought one other thing that was worth bringing to people's attention is a new inclusion in the governance report whereby, in conversation with the CEO, who brought a good suggestion forward, we've agreed to now start including status of petitions tabled. So I think in terms of a transparency measure, which is something that we've built into the new council plan and something that we're all very passionate about achieving, this is another step in the right direction on that, so that we will have that included as an ongoing record of petitions that we're receiving and how they're responded to over time. So that helps us close the loop with the community and have them understand what we're receiving and how we're responding to it. And I think it's a really great addition to the governance report. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? No? I was going to speak to the MAV motion, but I think you did it very well. Thank you, Mayor O'Toole. So I will just move us on to the vote. All in favour of this motion, raise your hand. That's carried unanimously, so thank you very much. Yes. Next item is just items to be tabled. So councillor, there's one item to be tabled this evening, and this is the affirmation of office as administered by the CEO and dated and signed by councillor Velella, which is required to be recorded in the minutes of a council meeting as required under section 32A of the Local Government Act 2020. So you will find that in the minutes from this meeting, if anyone wants to view it. And it doesn't require any voting or any debate. So, but once again, welcome councillor Velella. Okay, we have a couple of notices of motion. So the first one is the Zero Waste Fairfield Village event. Councillor Demetriadis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to raise the motion with an amendment. I seek leave from the Chair to do so.
Yes, of course. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So there's a point five that's been added.
Thank you, sorry. So do we have a seconder for this motion? Councillor O'Brien. Okay, would the mover like to, oh, yeah, would you like to speak, councillor Demetriadis?
Thank you. I'm very excited to announce that the Fairfield Traders and Village Greening have teamed up to host Darabin's first ever zero waste festival on the 26th of October this year. As we know, large social gatherings generally can create a considerable amount of waste that goes to landfill. Zero waste events aim to minimise the environmental impact of gatherings by diverting materials from landfill through better waste management practices, by reducing, reusing, recycling and composting waste, ultimately aiming to eliminate the amount of waste that is sent to landfill. These events also serve as educational opportunities to promote sustainable practices and raise awareness about the benefits of a secular economy. I'd like to thank councillor O'Brien for seconding this motion and for her input, particularly in suggesting that council could look into developing a sustainable events kit, which may be obtained from council for small community events. And could include things like providing bins at events in order to maximise recycling and food composting, which I'm sure she'll talk about in her speech. I commend this motion to the chamber and I ask all councillors to support Darabin's first ever zero waste festival.
Thank you, councillor Demetriadis. Councillor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you councillor Demetriadis for working together and including this item at number five. So in terms of the motion at its core, I believe the zero waste event at the heart of the motion does deserve our support. And that includes various reasons. Firstly, we've seen some fantastic local initiatives recently achieving a lot with very little. And Darabin's so fortunate to have many passionate organisations working to achieve that with us. And Village Green is a great example. Their work in Fairfield Village encourages reusable bags, cups and containers to be used in shops and cafes. And they've been running dedicated eco-drop events, showing how much can be achieved through community-led effort. The Zero Waste Initiative builds on that energy. And by partnering with the Traders Association, Village Green are looking to reduce the environmental impact of a popular annual event. The collaboration is exactly the kind of grassroots leadership we should be encouraging. And so when we looked at how that support might take form, we realised that there was a bit of a gap in terms of what we offer and what we could be offering and indeed what some other councils do offer. So that's why the idea of a sustainable events kit has taken shape. Obviously, there's work to be done in this and there's money that would need to be invested in it, which we haven't put into this current year's budget. But we're looking for some information to come to us ahead of the development of the next budget for 2026/27, so that we can understand what would be involved in that. So yeah, if we do decide to address this when we have the full information, it may result in a little bit more effort and cost upfront. But once in place, the dividends it could return for the community and the local environment make it very much worth pursuing, in my opinion. And hopefully, we can support many other small organisations to run their lovely community events and achieve great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask, is it, could we move them, is there a little, is there more to the motion than what we can see on the screen? Are you? Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? Councillor Jelly?
Thank you very much through you, Mayor. And thank you councillors Demetriadis and O'Brien for working together to bring this to us. As we know, I just want to speak very quickly about the possibility of exploring a sustainable events kit that includes portable bike racks to encourage active transport. So especially for something like Fairfield Village, which is a very cyclable area, it's very easy to get to. It could be a really great thing, fun thing for families to all get in their bikes and ride down. You have easy parking right there. I've been to, you know, many community events and community festivals where I've ridden my bike there, as have hundreds of other people, and you cannot find anywhere to chain your bike up to. There's not a straight sign left. And so it's a sure sign that bike parking hasn't really been planned for. And the most recent examples of that were in the, I think it was the Northcott Rise Festival last year. So it's really encouragingly, but there are organisations out there that do, you know, there's all sorts of things. You can get really, really fancy, bicycle valet parking, which I've never tried yet. I don't quite know how that works. Somebody just go and ride my bike around. Anyway. So it is really exciting. And it's not just about this. It's about ensuring that there's, so we can bring in, working in partnership with other organisations to get those water bottle refill stations, so that we can encourage more people to bring their reusable water bottles, you know, refilled. So regardless of, you know, the weather conditions, that we can encourage, you know, the old adage of reduce, reuse and recycle in every little way. And that is the sort of leadership that Darabin City Council is known for, as councillor Velella mentioned before. You know, we really are a climate leader and this is just another step on that way. So it is always something that we can keep stepping forwards for. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this motion? Okay, we might go to the vote then. All in favour, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you. Carried. Next notice of motion, again councillor Demetriadis, this one relates to the West Preston Soccer Club.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
So this is the motion. Do I have a seconder for councillor Demetriadis's motion? Councillor Selkos has put up his hand. Yeah, so does the mover wish to speak?
Yes. So West Preston Soccer Club is a longstanding local club with over 90 registered players, with forecasting growth to 400 participants next year. The club calls HLT Alton Reserve in Preston its home ground. HLT Alton Reserve comprises of two playing fields, which are critical to the club's training and match day operations. Unfortunately, the 2025 football season, this season, West Preston Soccer Club had encountered an incredibly difficult season with multiple breakings, facility damage and limited access to safe playing surfaces. These challenges have placed significant strain on the club and its members through no fault of their own. Therefore, I've raised this motion to acknowledge those impacts with compassion, practical support for West Preston Soccer Club and a commitment to improved outcomes moving forward. I commend the motion to council.
Thank you. Councillor Selkos, would you like to talk to this matter?
I'll reserve my right, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the motion? Anyone else who would like to speak? Councillor Selkos? Nope. Okay, we'll go to the vote. All is in favour, raise your hand. That's passed unanimously. Thank you. Yes, I think that might bring us to the end. We have no urgent business for consideration tonight. We have no confidential reports to be considered this evening. So I now, as there is no other business, I'm going to close the meeting at 8:43pm. So thank you, everybody. Good night, councillors, staff and community members. And we might ask that the Zoom and live streaming be ceased now. Thank you and goodbye.